To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
First on our agenda is Edwin from Kersey to talk about the public hearing and our planning grant.
Yep. This is a public hearing to receive any public comments or questions about the county's proposed application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a CDBG planning grant to complete a comprehensive plan for the county. The grant amount will be $60,000. The local match requirement is $5,250. The application will be submitted August 15th, and award announcements are expected by the end of September. So this is just a hearing to get any public comments or questions. I think Nathan's going to say a little bit about the actual plan.
Yeah, so Plaski County has not updated its comprehensive plan since 2009. Honestly, having come in at the tail end of when the consultant who put that together for the county was wrapping up some things with our zoning ordinances at the time, zoning maps, I wasn't especially impressed with the work that they had done at that time, but we were in a transition period, the first time we were ever running a planning commission BZA, and over the years, it just sort of sat there. And as we have been seeing a lot of change in the community, as we've seen some of the work that the community foundation has done, you know, in partnership with my office and bringing Ball State in, conversations we've had with some of the new commissions I work with under our restructuring, there's been some interest in finally pursuing this, getting a lot of, you know, looking at public input in light of everything we've seen from solar projects to the effects of the pandemic on the community and the economy, to changes in the county's finances over the last few years, to what changes we may be looking at, depending on whether or not any changes are made to the legislation that passed in SCA 1 this year. There's just a lot going on. We've done an economic development strategic plan update, and a housing plan addition to that, and it started a tourism plan. All of this, these are things that could be informed, could have been informed by and now can be informed by for updates, a comprehensive plan that takes a bigger picture look at the community's next 15 to 20 years or so. And as Jerry White spoke or explained to us, you know, there, there are 13, I think, different subject matters that the state will expect this plan to address. So your land use, your economic development, housing, transportation, so, community and social services, you know, this is a very much a big picture project that will take six to 12 months of data research and collation, steering committee meetings, public meetings, public hearings, online surveys, that will, like I said, end up in a new comprehensive plan that ideally reflects the needs, wants, desires, challenges of this community as they look like in 2025 as compared to what they looked like in 2009. We have our comprehensive plan committee, our interview committee, put together. Commissioner Kniebel is serving on that with me, two others, and we will be interviewing the two firms that submitted statements of qualification on Friday morning, hoping to bring a recommendation to the commissioners at next week's joint session. So that's the gist of it. We're looking at, I mean, this is a document that is very broad in nature, looking at 13 or so categories that the Indiana Code outlines should be, could be addressed by this and that OKRA requires be addressed by it if they are funding a project.
Any applicants? How many applicants are there?
Uh, like firms that submitted to do it, just, just the two. And so we'll be interviewing them.
The $65,250 more experiences cover the cost and provide us a very detailed comprehensive.
Yeah, that's the, the most the state will allow, and that's what all the, all the consultants know how much the state allows. I mean, and they're required to make, they have to have everything.
Yeah, realistically, I'd say the only chance it goes higher is if we say, look, we really feel that we need to address the dearth of, or the forthcoming dearth of attorneys as many of ours in our community, things like that that are outside of that, what's especially stipulated. If we see there are needs in the community forthcoming that aren't, that, that's the only chance where we might negotiate additional costs if they can dive into some of those extra things like that.
How do they gather information from the, Nathan, you touched on that a little bit, but I hope you can go a little more in depth on how these companies find out, build.
I mean, Kersey has already, for the, through the month of July, did an online survey that we shared on social media, and Edwin just closed it. We haven't even selected a firm or applied, and we've got responses from 123 members of the community that will provide to the consultants so that they can get, hit the ground running. But several, you know, every firm does it differently, so the exact answer's going to depend on whom we end up hiring, but they will have, hold several public meetings throughout the county at different stages to address different topics, different phases of topic development, that sort of thing, online surveys. Part of that will be a decision that the project steering committee and the consultant reach together exactly how much of X, Y, and Z, when, where, those sorts of things. But they'll implement a full array of tools to get as much input as possible.
Nathan, who then does the writing of that comprehensive plan?
The firm does.
The firm, okay.
They will send drafts of sections to the, to the steering committee for review, but that is in their hands to draft it.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, and I was going to get to this later, but in the minutes from our last commissioners meeting on July 21st, it does say Michael Tedi and Nathan Orger are to be in charge of rewriting the comprehensive plan. And I brought the attention, brought attention to this, Teresa, with you at, or, you know, through email. And, you know, originally it said Don said Michael Tedi and Nathan, and you said Don mentioned to you as well that he did not say that. Is that correct, Don?
Right.
So, okay, so I'm just curious how this is still in here, that it says Michael Tedi and Nathan Orger are to be in charge of rewriting the comprehensive plan. Is that, so that's not correct, am I right? Nathan, you're saying that is not correct?
That is not correct. Whichever firm is hired will compose the document.
So can we, Teresa, strike that from the minutes? Okay. All right. Thank you.
A.
That was from July 21st, 2025, regular session, Plaski County Commissioners. Right. And again, you know, I've stated before, my concern with the comprehensive plan is that it has largely been ignored, sections of it, over the last five years. So my concern is, are we, are we revisiting the comprehensive plan at this point to have it mirror the changes that have taken place that did not align with the comprehensive plan that was in, in effect from 2009 on? Because I do feel like it was, it was disregarded. It was, it was not followed. Am I correct in saying that? I mean, we're looking at the largest solar complex in the nation, and our comprehensive plan very insignificantly even talked about solar. So how do we go from a blip in a comprehensive plan five years ago to the largest solar array, industrial solar complex in the nation? I, I have little faith in a comprehensive plan at this point because it did not protect the county. It did not, we did not follow it.
Without getting into a deeper conversation about fundamental disagreements we may have on the matter, I think the one thing I would say is that this go, this issue goes to why going forward, and, and OKRA explicitly requires this, the county needs to do a better job of keeping up with the plan over time. I think the, the 2009 plan spends more time addressing wind energy than it does solar, because quite frankly, I don't think 16 years ago, people contemplated the technology to develop solar at this scale this far north existed, whereas if it did, they may have. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it shouldn't.
Nathan, that doesn't matter. The comprehensive plan is the comprehensive plan, and it was disregarded.
Well, that is a matter of interpretation of what its object, what its language is versus the spirit of the plan. It's, you know, it's not a binding law. It is a plan to guide. We should have, our plan commission should have looked at the comprehensive plan at least for minor updates, seven to 10 years after it was adopted, and it didn't, and decided how it needed to reflect changes. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that as it is strictly written, it was followed, but I think this is a very good example of why it needs to be updated, and why, once it's updated, it needs to be kept better tabs on. If we want to, if we expect that we are going to abide by this if we go forward with it, then we have, it's on us, specifically plan commission and staff and county commissioners, and everyone else who, whose work, whether it's mine or highway, is affected by it, is actually referring back to it, having conversations on an annual basis, at least the minimum five years OKRA requires, to make sure that as conditions change, we are reacting to those and updating it. So, but ultimately, it comes down to us to enforce it, and as a community, to have those conversations about what does this mean? What does line X mean in the context of the big plan versus line Y versus line A?
Well, you can understand my concern because moving forward, I don't think it really matters, and I hate to be the negative Nancy up here, but if we completely disregarded it, the 2009 version, then we're spending money to just cast it aside when people decide they want to go with a different agenda, and that concerns me greatly. I'm not sure why we would invest the money if we're not going to follow it anyway, and we have not followed it largely when it comes to that.
I suppose I would turn it back on the county administrators, the board of executive, the commissioners, say, then it's incumbent on you to ensure that the people were, and I realize, two years from now, one of your seats could change, another to you, the other two, and you can't control that. We have to work to make this a document that we actually look at on a regular basis and are consciously implementing on a regular basis.
Look at and comply are different.
And that's all, that's on all of us.
All elected officials.
Yes, but especially the commissioners and the council as they are asked to fund projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Um.
At this time.
I've got some documents.
We'll open it up.
We'll have some documents for the commissioners to sign.
We'll open it up for public comment at this time. Ask that you state your name, residence, speak once, submit your comments to approximately two minutes. Anyone for public comment at this time dealing with the grant application for a Plaski County comprehensive plan?
Yeah, yes. I, I believe.
16th?
I, I don't know. That sounds, I'd have to, I have the publisher's affidavit.
Nathan, do you know if it was published?
I am looking it up right now.
Thank you.
That was Kersey's responsibility.
Hi, Leanne Wright from the community foundation of Plaski County. Yes, I am, was advertised about, um, the community foundation did a series of comprehensive sessions and presented the commissioners and town councils and other community leaders a packet of reports, and recommended that the county enter a comprehensive plan, address the issues that were raised by the community. So, me foundation supports this application and encourages you to move forward with the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne, we do remember you presenting at the commission, how the work that you put into this, well as many others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Standing, yes.
Thank you.
In the journal? Thank you. Others?
I'll make a motion then to go ahead with the Kersey planning grant.
I'll second that discussion by the commissioners. Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? You're on. You'll have some papers for us afterwards.
I have one, and I think.
Anything else? I'm sorry, Edwin.
Yeah, I mean, there is a resolution that needs to be passed.
Resolution authorizing Kersey to submit the application. So I would make a motion on the resolution authorizing Kersey to submit the application for the grant.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to pass the resolution authorizing Kersey to submit the application. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Closed. Edwin, thank you for that. You have some other things here shortly. Nathan, CDC, quite a few items.
Um, yeah, I can talk about, I was approached by the Madera Ville Fire Department, White Post Township, to ask the commissioners if they would sponsor a CDBG grant for a new fire station for Madera Ville. Only cities, towns, or counties can apply for CDBG grants. We have submitted this grant years in the past that it wasn't funded, and because the fire district is so large, it takes in so much more area than the, just the town of Madera Ville, state said that the county would need to be applicant instead of the town of Madera. The county at that time did agree to sponsor it. The fund will run through the county and the township, which will own the station, will be the recipient for the grant.
Has no impact upon the comprehensive grant?
Not at this time. It could potentially, if the comprehensive plan grant is not funded the first time, the next application would be in November, so it wouldn't be awarded until the end of December, and the fire station grant would go in December 20th, or about December 20th. The county can only have one application in at a time, so if the comp plan is not funded, then you'd have to make a decision in the fall whether you wanted to reapply for the comp plan or apply for the fires.
My opinion, I think the White Post Fire Department outweighed the comprehensive plan in many ways because of the safety issue. How much is the grant?
The maximum grant they can apply for is $750,000.
I would make a motion to approve the county serving as the applicant of record for White Post Township, their pursuit of the grant for the construction of the fire department.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. The application written?
No, not yet.
Right. See a board member maybe probably writing it. Thank you. Other Kersey updates?
Yeah, I can give a little bit. I don't know how familiar some of you are with Kersey. Um, we are a regional planning commission. We serve eight counties, Benton, Carroll, Jasper, Newton, Plaski, Stark, Horn, and White. There are about 16 agencies like ours around the state. Um, we provide a number of services to the counties. One that we're most known for is probably grant writing. But we, right now, we are working with Francisville. They're just went to open bids and are ready to get contracts signed for their water project. Um, we're working on the fire department in Madera Ville. We're also working with a group trying to renovate the old Legion building in Madera Ville. They're looking at a planning grant, fourth round this year, also in November. Um, also, what Nathan had said, the Francisville might be interested in a planning grant for the town. Most of the projects we're working on right now, though, I think Leanne contacted us about a potential, another potential project. Um, we also, we operate Head Start in Plaski County and Jasper and Newton. We have 31 spots for Head Start Children in Plaski County. We also are the grantee for the public transit that is run through Plaski County Human Services. We are the grantee for Stark, Plaski, Jasper, and Newton for public transit. Um, we are a regional planning organization for NDOT. We have two contracts with NDOT. We do traffic counting for NDOT. We also do some planning for NDOT. Um, as you, some of you know, we are working on the Safe Streets for All Grant right now, that we got a grant from Federal Highway, where we're looking at the high injury areas in the state in all eight of our counties, actually try to find how we can lower the high injury and fatality rate on counties and local streets. Um, that, perhaps should be done by the end of the year, early next year, and finalized by the middle of it. That's most of the updates I have for right now.
That's a lot of updates. Thank you. That all sounds good.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Right. Fortunately, Edwin took care of a couple of mine. Courthouse project can get through this pretty quickly today. Change orders. Um, there have been some minor additional costs popping up in the home stretch that Ton and Blank have been covering out of their contingency, but we have not had any new change orders in the last three weeks on our end. Uh, project finances, we have a current contingency balance of $35,112.50, which is about $14,000 higher than what I last reported. As for receiving the final invoice from our construction testing contractor, I was able to shift the excess balance from that appropriation into our contingency, and actually did keep $6,000 in that line item, just in case there were any surprises with any of the test results. It doesn't seem to be the case that there have been, so eventually we'll be able to move that $6,000 into contingency as well and get that a little over 35. After the maturation and cashing out of our bond proceeds CD in mid-July, we now have $156,514.63 in excess interest. That is, as you know from past explanations, we cannot put into the courthouse, but must put into other county facilities.
There a deadline on that when you have to use that money?
I believe it is three years from the issuance of the debt, so that puts us at mid-27.
Okay.
I think that's right.
Sure we can spend it before.
I, I think so.
Mid-year 2027.
Um, project progress. Construction trailer was removed last week, while some of the fencing came down today. It was supposed to come down Friday. They had an issue with their truck. Supposed to be here first thing in the morning. They didn't get here till late morning, close to noon, but they have removed half of the construction site fencing. Representatives from Luminot and RJE visited this morning for a furniture punchless walk through. We have a short list of additional pieces that we expect to order, and I'll be checking with department heads this week to determine if any of them see anything missing they feel needs to be added. Gilman Appliance and DV here in town has ordered refrigerators for the building, and I have scheduled a first small move, which will deliver the restored pieces stored here in the highway lobby to the courthouse. Um, furniture movers have generally been very conscientious, but, um, these are the pieces that are the most sensitive, and so wanted to get that done quickly and make sure that if there were any damages when they brought it in, the painters would still be available to fix any of those issues. Um, is, these are also some of the biggest pieces. We don't have too much coming back from the east annex that is going to be large, since we have mostly new furniture in the building. Um, our steering committee will be meeting on Wednesday to discuss planning for ribbon cutting slash grand opening ceremony, and then move back into the building, the latter of which hinges on IT doors and, to a lesser extent, furniture. We do have temporary doors in place at the north side front entrance now, but are still waiting on the new ones, as well as a few interior doors, and the exterior doors that we do have in place still need to have some of their locking mechanisms finished. As far as I know, all of the leaks recently discovered have been corrected. Some of them were roof issues, but in a few places, some pre-existing window caulk had begun to rot, and we had to replace that, and they went through and sort of assessed other windows to make sure we didn't have any other problems like that. Any questions on the courthouse?
Uh, yeah, the doors, Nathan, are those key-coded doors, or what are the locks going to be on the courthouse doors?
So, the north first floors door at the top of the steps, those will be FOB access. The west basement doors coming from the ramp from Meridian Street, like the one that people go in between the courthouse and the Justice Center will use, will be FOB access, since those will be only employee-only entrance and by, uh, emergency exit. The main lower level north doors, I think, will be keyed, because those will be the ones that we have public entrance to.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the courthouse? All right, then, couple of quick other updates. Let, website is almost ready to be live. I would hope to be live last week, but Crane and Gray is still working on the tweaks that I requested. They came down last week. We went through everything that I still felt needed to be fixed, that I could not fix, some of which they were able to show me how to do in the future, some of which is still a little above my skill level, but it should not take long to implement these last changes. And then just a quick update on the revolving loan fund. Jacob and I will be meeting to review the program rules and proposed changes next week. If time permits, I will try to present those at the, to the commissioners at the joint session. No, I won't. I'm sorry, my calendar, that math is wrong. That, that, that dating is wrong. I will try to get them to you at the mid-August meeting. If not, we'll get them in September. Um, but we do have that on the calendar. We currently have more than $365,000 available to lend and about a half dozen potentially interested applicants. How many of those pan out? We'll see, meet the eligibility requirements, can come up with the other, meet all of our requirements, we'll see. Um, through July, all of our current borrowers are in good standing, with two already having made their August payments, and the Tippi's loan will be paid off in full either this month or in September. All I have, unless you have any questions on the website, the revolving loan fund, or anything else.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paulie Vanderey, assessor?
Evening. I have reassessment bid, fire match set. I am in this group, so my recommendation is to go forward, access for four years, assessment. Um, my eye cyclical assessment, every four years, our office visits at least the property one time, but I, as a gentleman called today, and my property, that is the case if there is improvements and removals going on. So for instance, we're putting up some kind of a building, and you've gotten from the building inspector or through our office, or if we see that you have something that you haven't gotten a permit for, have the authority through the state of Indiana to go onto the property and do, um, full reassessment. So that is something that we also have included in reassessment bid. We also, for the reassessment bid, um, have unlimited attorney use through Nexus Group if we have appeals, and we typically do have appeals. Thankfully, we're able to work through most of those and get them settled before, but we have had to rely on the attorneys. Thankfully, it's part of our bid amount that they have bid, that it's unlimited use. That I'm thinking. Um, something else that Nexus helps us with is defining boundaries and filling, filling factors in the land rates in Kama. One interesting fact that happened this year is our legislators, through the work of Purdue and the LGF, had set our land tag rate 2390. Well, after the session started, they ended up dropping that rate after we had all the rates into our system. rates into our system and our Form elevens had been printed by the printer and had already gone out. So that dropped to twenty-one twenty and that was retroactive back to January one of this year. So we had all of those parcels to go back through for that all of that got taken care of as far as the agreed for twenty-five pay twenty-six. Also, in that this year especially, we'll be doing a lot of work in the field on the solar. Last year, we did have two taxpayers that had broken ground and we did get their land put into a rate of thirteen thousand seven hundred. And something that I think you'll find interesting is the land can never be abated. There's a lot of talk about the solar getting abatements, but when it comes to the land itself, they cannot get an abatement on that. So Nexus also will help us with all the measuring of those fields, although if we had telemetry, that would also help greatly because that would be an overhead flight would come in quite handy. So those are basically things that we rely on Nexus to help us with. Also, our sales disclosures, those to come up with our neighborhood factors, they work with us on those as well. So I have found that Nexus is a very important part of what we do to get our rates, all of our work done to keep us on time in Plasguy County.
Rate for is thirteen thousand. So, yeah. Okay. Okay. Right. Right, but, but the developers pay the difference, is that correct? Oh. It's all worked out individually? Okay. But that's independent. That's not just a blanket. Everybody's doing it the same way. It, it comes down to whatever. It, it's, it's not then for the county that a landowner would pay the twenty-one twenty and then the developer would pay
Correct.
The difference. It's different based on every contract you're saying. Could be. So it goes to the landowner at least? Okay. 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 Yes, I think. So the developer would pay the, generally they're responsible for paying the difference. Okay. Right, that goes away. Oh. I did not realize that. Okay. It is. Gotcha. Thank you. That's not what I thought. So, good. Okay, thank you Holly.
Thank you for explaining the assessment. Randy Larkin?
Yes. Is that okay? I just turned the mic on. It's powered at the mix. Okay, can you hear me all right? All right. All right, so good evening commissioners and fellow members of Plasguy County. Thank you for the time to present an opportunity to you tonight. I'm here with a request that I believe serves all of us, not just as officials or residents, but as people who care deeply about Plasguy County and its future. It's no surprise to anyone in this room that Plasguy County is at a pivotal point in history. Decisions being made today about infrastructure, development, public resources and long-term planning will shape who chooses to stay, who decides to invest, how we grow, how we serve, and just as importantly, how we preserve what makes Plasguy County special. That's why tonight I'm asking you as commissioners to help us take meaningful and necessary step forward by supporting the launch of a Plasguy County Town Hall series. So I, I want to share with you the Google definition of Town Hall series for those who may not be aware. A Town Hall is a public forum where members of a community can gather to hear from and interact with their elected officials or other relevant leaders. Town Halls are designed to foster communication and engagement between residents and their representatives. They promote transparency and allow for direct dialogue on local matters. This isn't about taking sides and it's not about placing blame. It's about connection. We have an opportunity to create space for shared understanding, to replace speculation with clarity and to move from frustration to forward motion. So my ask, once again, is that I'm respectfully requesting that the board formally support and host a quarterly Plasguy County Town Hall series. These would be public hybrid format forums designed to foster this two-way communication between our community members and our county leadership. Here's what it could look like. Held quarterly so that no one meeting carries the impossible burden of solving or covering everything at once. Focused topics in each session, starting with two of the following is my proposal: solar and energy storage, budget transparency and use, and the county strategic comprehensive plan implementation. Future sessions could then explore other community-wide topics such as resident retention and attraction, economic development, tourism, government and nonprofit collaboration, quality of life, or any others that you deem necessary or that the public could present to you for consideration. These sessions would provide space not only for the public to ask questions, but also for our leaders to share your priorities and progress, communicate your stances on important public matters, and help the community understand where we stand today and where we're headed together. This format allows for informed participation, not reactive feedback. And most importantly, it's designed to build, not break, community connection. So why now? Over the past year, I have had dozens of respectful, candid conversations with community members across Plasguy County, as many of you on both sides of this room likely have too. These aren't people looking to stir up conflict. They're residents who care deeply about where we live. They're invested in our future and they're paying attention. And what I've heard again and again is it boils down to three buckets mostly. I don't feel like anyone's listening. I don't know what's going on until after it's already done and it feels like decisions are being made behind closed doors. These perceptions, whether accurate or not, are real and they're growing. There's visible tension between community members and our officials and if we continue down this path, I genuinely fear for what that means for Plasguy County's future. Right now, the only formal opportunity residents have to speak is during the final minutes of county meetings after a full agenda has been covered and after decisions have already been made. And we get two minutes. Two minutes at the microphone does not equate to meaningful engagement. We have the chance to change that. So to show that local leadership isn't just about voting on motions, it's about listening to the people those motions affect, I'm again asking your support for quarterly Plasguy County Town Halls. You benefit as well, so I, I do want to take a moment and acknowledge something really important. I understand that you face pressures as public officials. You're tasked with tough decisions, limited time and competing priorities. I don't discount that. You carry the weight of managing taxpayer resources while trying to move the county forward. I'm not here to diminish it. I'm here to offer something that can actually make those responsibilities more manageable because when people feel informed and included, there's less friction. There's less backtracking later. When questions get addressed early, there's less rumors. When dialogue replaces assumptions, your work becomes more effective, not more difficult. This Town Hall format isn't just to benefit the public. It's a support tool for you too. A way to reduce miscommunication, increase buy-in and build trust before tensions rise or misinformation spreads. And if designed well, it can save time in the long run, reduce rumors, reduce misunderstandings and reduce the instances that leave people feeling unheard. This request isn't based on personal agenda. And ironic, I did not note the curpsy comprehensive plan was on the agenda tonight, so it's, it's ironic. It's grounded in both data and our county's own community visioning work. Earlier this year, the Plasguy County Strategic Visioning Plan commissioned by the Community Foundation and completed by the Indiana Communities Institute at Wall State was represented right here in this very room. More than one hundred and forty community members participated in five public listening sessions across our county. The top concerns they raised included transparency and leadership communication, stronger collaboration between government and residents, and clarity of direction and decision-making. These aren't assumptions. They're findings backed by research and reflective of our own residents' lived experiences. And the report didn't just identify issues. It included a clear recommendation: continued public engagement. That's exactly what this Town Hall series is intended to do. As Mrs. Wright said when she delivered the speech, in her speech when she delivered the report, this data is not just for analysis. It is a tool for action. This is action. This is a step forward that builds on the visioning process, not in place of it, but because of it. Town Halls are not new and they're not experimental. They've been used for decades across the country to strengthen community-government relationships. In fact, Town Halls are considered a gold standard for transparent participatory leadership. They've been implemented successfully in counties of every size, including many rural ones just like ours. So we're not reinventing the wheel. We're simply choosing to roll it forward in Plasguy County. Additional community benefits. I see this as a strategic investment in the civic health of Plasguy County. The benefits are real, measurable and wide-reaching. One is improved transparency and trust. By opening up this kind of forum, you send a strong message that we are not hiding, we are here and we're willing to listen. That alone builds credibility and when residents feel heard, trust follows. Better two-way communication. So Town Halls allow for structured dialogue, not just filtered updates or rushed feedback. Residents get to ask the questions that matter most to them and officials have the chance to explain your thinking and hear community sentiment in real time. It also serves as a voice for the quiet majority. And I really want to emphasize this. Not everyone feels comfortable stepping up to a microphone in a formal meeting. You have no idea how nervous I have been all day. By allowing pre-submitted questions and write-in options at the event, we could create space for those who are shy, those who are worried about backlash, and those who are unsure how to phrase their concerns aloud. Inclusion starts with access. This model respects all voices, not just the loudest. It also diffuses misinformation and tension. So let's be honest, when people don't get information directly, they fill in blanks. That's how rumors grow and that's how trust erodes. A Town Hall offers a chance to address tough topics head-on with clarity and respect instead of letting frustrations play out in private conversations, group messages or Facebook comments sections. And when residents feel they've had a seat at the table, even disagreement becomes easier to navigate. And as I said, it isn't just good for the residents. It's good for our leadership also. It's good for you. Town Halls offer an opportunity to surface issues early, clarify misunderstandings and prevent larger conflicts from brewing. So rather than you hearing about concerns secondhand or too late, you can hear them directly in context and ask clarifying questions. It's efficient for the long term. So hosting a Town Hall might take a couple hours once a quarter, but it can save dozens of hours down the line by reducing the need for one-on-one conversations with each of you among various constituents. And it prevents reactive damage control and it avoids long venting sessions during official business meetings. So I see it as a more efficient and more productive use for your time. And it's space to lead with confidence. So it isn't just a space for you to listen, but it's also a space for you to lead because we as residents want to hear what your goals are, what progress has been made and where you stand on key issues that affect our community. Town Halls give you that platform. They allow you to proactively shape the narrative and help residents understand how and why decisions are being made. And it's fulfilling your oath. So when you took office, you swore to serve the people of Plasguy County. A Town Hall is an extension of that oath. It's a chance to model transparency, accessibility and service, not just in principle, but in practice. This doesn't need to be complicated, expensive or hard to execute. With a thoughtful design and a few best practices, a Town Hall can run smoothly and make a lasting impact. And I took the time to do research and discover what those best practices are and I know that your time is valuable, so I have some suggested recommendations based on those best practices. So my request includes suggested timing and format. I propose the dates of Thursday, August twenty... Hang on. Let me pull my thing back out. I think it's the twenty-eighth, right? August twenty-eighth at six-thirty or Saturday, August thirtieth at ten AM, a duration of two hours. The cadence would be quarterly to keep engagement ongoing but manageable. And the leadership bodies that it should include, at least at the first one, I propose the, your group is along with the county council. So the commissioners and the council. The new options, we, we have plenty. So Eastern Plasguy or West Central High School, Plasguy County Public Library, Knights of Columbus, Celebration Station, Meadow Springs, Bethel Bible. Why these places instead of here? Because each offers a neutral accessible setting that signals this is different from a government meeting. It's a community forum. Yes, I can. I may get to them. May, may I ask you to just hold them in case I get to them? That way I'm efficient with time.
Heard a lot about the comprehensive.
In terms of a topic to be considered for a comprehensive plan?
As a comprehensive plan, as you've heard, pause a lot of the... Through meetings with individuals, surveys, et cetera. So how do you see this working with a comprehensive?
It could possibly work in tangent, but I see this as you, as local leadership, talking directly with your constituents without a middleman other than a proposed facilitator that I would take. And it helps build trust and credibility on both parties' parts in that stance. Now, that's my interpretation. There's probably others if you would, if you would like for those to be included.
Okay, you answered my question.
Okay.
Okay. Said you would help organize these? You'd be the facilitator?
I am willing to help do whatever I can to make this effective and efficient and not be a burden on those that I'm making the request to. Yes. Yes, and I have some details in here for that for you.
You talk Think I know the answer in that you have not talked to the commissioner. Excuse me, the council?
No, sir. I believe you, as commissioners, can make a motion to move forward with this on your own, and we can invite them to it. I don't think it's something where you can require it, but I would recommend that they attend. It would be to everybody's benefit to hear firsthand, both ways, right? Your perspectives and the public's perspectives, if I see it.
Just trivial type thing. The date, 12th August, you proposed it.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be something that we have to look at our Look at our individual calendars.
I can respect that, but considering the current momentum and progress that is taking place, I would advise that we do them as soon as we possibly could. And that gets three weeks' notice for both your group and the public, which should be more than sufficient to promote in the channels that I'm going to recommend.
Brandy, I am just going to mention, I am already scheduled to be out of state on, from the 25th through the 30th, through the 1st. I take that back.
We can come back and look at dates, but apart of trying to be effective and efficient for you, I wanted to include proposed dates.
Thank you.
And I did, for community awareness, before I pick up, I strategically chose a Thursday evening or a Saturday morning so that it does not conflict with working hours for most people. And I have a couple of other points that I'll make on that here in a moment. So where I paused, Mr. McClure, we wanted to wait until you could come back to continue, was that the venue options recommended offer a neutral, accessible setting that signals that this would be different from a government meeting. It's more of a community forum. I recommend a hybrid setup. Livestreamed and recorded. Posted promptly for transparency and broader access. And microphones required for all speakers, officials, and public. And then that a chat be monitored or questions collected for live live for virtual participants. Public participation channels could include pre-submitted questions, either online or a paper form that could be offered but not required. Write-in options during the event could be available. These options allow residents, again, who may be shy, anxious, or hesitant to speak aloud, the opportunity to still participate. And this format encourages wider and more thoughtful input. Accessibility and inclusion in ADA-compliant venue. Childcare offered nearby if possible. Even one to two trusted volunteers or some local childcare staff could make it more likely for the parents of young children to be able to come and attend and be active participants in Plaski County conversations. Moderation and ground rules. So I recommend a neutral third-party facilitator or moderator guide the discussion, and that there's clear expectations set at the beginning. So respectful tone. Five minutes on each topic comment. One comment per person until all have had a chance. And then allow a second round of questions if time allows. No personal attacks. And the moderator would ensure civility and productivity even when emotions are high. We could also incorporate some engagement tools, like optional interactive features, like a quick show of hands or live polls. It encourages attendees to feel seen and heard and gives you a quick pulse on what the public is thinking without having to talk to each one of us individually. So to ensure the Town Hall is productive, fair, and well-run, as I said, I strongly recommend that it be facilitated by a neutral third-party moderator, someone who can guide the conversation with professionalism and impartiality to help protect the integrity of the dialogue and reassures the public this space is truly about listening, not controlling the narrative. So there's several credible options that exist within our region. Purdue Extension has a community development resource. Their educators regularly lead forums and group facilitation across the state. And in many cases, it can be done as part of their public service mission with little to no cost beyond travel reimbursement. There's also independent professional facilitators. These could be Indiana or Midwest-based. They offer structured moderation for public forums. Rates vary. But a very well-run session of this scale would typically fall between $500 and $2,000, depending on the facilitator and the level of support needed. And then there's possibly community foundation partnership. Since this series builds directly on the work of the Plaski County Strategic Visioning Plan, we could explore partnering with the Community Foundation to help secure a nonpartisan facilitator. This is scalable. It's flexible. We can right-size the effort to match the available resources, and we can keep costs slow by using publicly-owned or donated space, leveraging existing livestream technology, and tapping trusted local volunteers for support roles as needed. The return on investment is measured in trust, transparency, and civic participation. This far outweighs any cost. And given the solar development revenue we've started receiving, I think it could be reasonable that a portion of those funds be used to support community connection, leadership accountability, and public dialogue. So I understand that there may be questions or reservations about this proposal. And I've tried to anticipate those concerns and offer thoughtful, practical responses. One, why do we need a Town Hall when we already have public meetings? So regular meetings are essential, but they're designed for official business, not open conversation. They follow strict agendas, allow limited public comment that often takes place after decisions have already been made. A Town Hall is different by design. It's informal. It's inclusive, and it's focused entirely on two-way dialogue. It's not a replacement for formal meetings. It's a complement to them. And it can make your official meetings more efficient by surfacing and addressing concerns beforehand. What if only a few people show up? Well, if the turnout is small, those who attend are often the most engaged, and their input is incredibly valuable. With proper outreach, attendance can grow over time. And a hybrid format and recordings ensure that participation extends beyond the room. A modest turnout is a strong starting point. The real measure is the quality of conversation, not the quantity of chairs filled. Here's a big one. And I've tried to think this through as well as I can, and I'm pretty confident in this. Won't this just become a complaint session? Not if it's structured well. That's why a skilled facilitator and clear ground rules really matter. People want to be heard, and often just having the space to speak in a respectful environment diffuses the very attention, the very tension that we may be concerned about. And if the criticism is unfair, you'll have the opportunity to respond in real time, calmly and publicly. Here's one too. We're really busy. Is this worth the time? Yes. Because this is the work. Listening is not a distraction from your role. It's a part of your duty. And I'm willing to help handling the logistics, the outreach, and the setup if need be. What we need from you is your presence and your willingness to listen. That's a powerful signal, and it's one the community will notice. We can't afford it. We can. The scale is adjustable, and the multiple low-cost facilitation options exist. And as I said, with new revenue flowing in from solar, I think this is the type of initiative that justifies those dollars in the eyes of the public. It's not just about what we spend. It's about what we're building. So to conclude, here's what I'm asking. This board to formally support and host a Plaski County Town Hall series, beginning with our first event in just a few weeks. My recommended dates were August 28th and August 30th. We can flex on that and choose something else, but I would not want to see it be delayed more than four weeks from today. Possible venues. I've suggested a list of what I consider to be neutral venue options. Best practices. Neutral third-party facilitator. Hybrid format. Microphones required. Pre-submitted questions encouraged but not required. Write-in options available during the event. And focus discussion on two key topics per session. As noted for the first one, I recommend choosing from solar and energy storage, budget transparency, and the county comprehensive plan. Future sessions can expand to cover additional topics as you and the community see fit. By supporting this, you'll be setting a powerful precedent, one that shows leading by dialogue, not division. And I want to be clear. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here to open a door. To shift from frustration to forward motion. To move from speculation to shared understanding. It's not about perfection. I don't want to overplan this. It's about progress. So imagine ending this year with a stronger connection to the people you serve. To a stronger connection to your local leadership. Imagine hearing fewer rumors and more ideas. Imagine a Plaski County that feels aligned, informed, and proud to move forward together. And I'm not just asking, I'm offering. I am fully prepared to help plan, promote, and coordinate the logistics to make this a success. Our community deserves to hear directly from our elected leaders, and your support is essential for that to happen. So I'm asking you to say yes to the people you serve. To say yes to respectful dialogue. And to say yes to showing up, listening, and leading well. I thank you for your time or service and your consideration.
Thank you, Brandy. I don't have questions. I will. I will. I do support everything that you've recommended. And as many know, I hosted at least four Town Halls during the election cycle in the various communities throughout Plaski County. And all of them were beneficial. There was nothing nothing that was not beneficial. And I ran on transparency, trying to create dialogue, trying to connect and represent constituents. So I'm fully supportive of quarterly meetings. I had said through the election that I would like to continue the Town Halls. You know, I had asked to do them bi-annually. Quarterly is fine with me. I'm in full support of it. I think our community needs to, we need to bring this community back together. And the only way that is going to happen is open dialogue, respectful conversations, public participation. I ran as a commissioner to do that. And I think that should be the goal, to bring that. So I'm in full support, Brandy. Like I say, my only struggle is I will be in Montana during that time for a very important meeting. So I can do it, and you know, I will make arrangements to do it any other time. And if, you know, looking down the road, if I've got, you know, a month or two in advance, then I can juggle my schedule differently. I just have that on the books right now.
We could look to the following week if the other two commissioners would be open to that, to be able to move forward with something this evening and to be able to get the ball rolling. From what I'm hearing from the community is they would prefer it not to be delayed, but to happen sooner. And I think it would be to the benefit of all of us to be us to hear that request with respect.
Dates are variable. I say later. At the beginning of August. Going to talk to the council possibly. I am thinking possibly.
So I would
That would give us time.
I would ask, I suppose I'm asking you, I would ask for council participation, but I'm asking for this to be led by our commissioners. Pardon me, Mr. McClure.
I certainly have no feelings on it one way or necessary.
Sir, if I may reiterate to you. Give me one moment, please, as you just heard me talk. I have multiple notes here for you. So the, as I said a moment ago, the Plaski County Strategic Visioning Plan that was presented to you by Mrs. Wright in this very room earlier this year and then reiterated this evening, three of the top five concerns are oriented around this. One is transparency and leadership communication. The second, stronger collaboration between government and residents. Three, clarity of direction and decision-making. And that's also supported by what I quoted as the three most common responses I'm hearing when I am talking to many, many constituents, which I presume each of you may have heard some of this yourselves. If not, I can encourage you to ask maybe some of the people here. Have you ever said or felt, "I don't feel like anyone's listening"? "I don't know what's going on until after it's already done", or "it feels like decisions are being made behind closed doors"? Sir, those are the reasons that we have substantiated this ask. And it's not coming from me solely, but I am the one here speaking to you, making the request. So I just want to reiterate, that's why the need was, the case was made.
And you had covered it quite a bit. Here are the documents.
Absolutely. Let me give you one that doesn't have all my chicken scratch on it, and I can email it to you.
Appreciate it. I'd be willing to participate, be a part of that. But as I said, the dates, dates that works.
And the only thing I would add is, I mean, I think from what we've heard, you could coordinate it, do this, but I would just remind you because of the open-door laws, you would still have to follow all of the advertising statute, everything else going to be. And I mean, so I'm not here to say that that can't be done. I think you can do it. I just would remind you that you can't show up to a Town Hall meeting and basically have a meeting before the meeting.
It would be advertised as a work session.
Yes, and I mean, you would have to have it advertised. And, you know, I know you also too have, I believe there was an ordinance that kind of was passed as far as procedure would go. So as long as you distinguish between the two. But I'm just saying from a legal standpoint, I think it's definitely doable. And that's up to the three of you to decide whether you do it or not. But I would just, you don't want to get in a situation where you're inadvertently violating the open-door law.
Thank you.
And I have copies, I believe, of most of the ordinances. I will be transparent in that I haven't fully immersed and don't fully understand them all. But I believe that the timelines that I was proposing adhere to what would be required to get this out into the public, and that if we used our standard channels, we would be able to abide by that. I heard you, Mrs. Kniebel, in that those two dates aren't doable for you. So I would look perhaps for each of you. I immediately threw out the following week, the beginning of September. If you happen to have calendars and would feel that that's doable so that we don't have to come back and go through all of this again, was kind of my hope.
Can I look at my calendar? Do you mind? If I look at my calendar now?
No, no. I was just trying to make it efficient and effective for both you and adhere to the guidelines of what the advertisement leeways are that we have for the county. And then I can connect with all of you as a follow-up. If it is chosen to move forward with this, I know that this is still in discussion state, but to ensure that we have the proper notices in the proper channels as needed, so that we don't do anything inadvertently.
I do have September 4th, which is a Thursday, available?
Saturday, the 6th.
Brandy, did you say it would be a Saturday morning?
My proposal would be a Thursday evening or a Saturday morning so that we are accommodating those who have standard working hours, to the best of our
I would be available the morning of September 6th, not the evening.
Mr. McClure, do you want to advise on availability on September 6th?
Commissioners, before you commit to that today, I would note that when we have our steering committee meeting on Wednesday, that is a possible date I'm going to pitch for our courthouse grand opening if we do a weekend versus weekday, primarily because the next day is the 130th anniversary of the county's taking custody of the building from the architects in 1895. Until we meet and decide if we think it's better to do weekday or weekend. But I can't give you a confirmation, but I did want to let you know that that's a potential date that we're going to be discussing on Wednesday.
So there could be an opportunity for efficiency there if you have them both on the same day?
Potentially.
And perhaps improved attendance at each?
What time would you have your open house? But not yours? What time would you have your open house, not yours, but the county's open house?
We'll see what the committee thinks is-
I am catering a wedding that evening in La Porte.
So if we, if we wanted to pre-propose some things, if you had the courthouse ceremony at nine, that leaves an hour and a half before 10:30 a.m. town hall could start, so that gives you opportunity to engage your constituents there, and then again at the town hall?
I'm okay with that.
That advisable for you? Okay.
No, I appreciate all the work and effort you have put into a wonderful presentation and a positive move forward for the county, Brandy. It's long overdue. So thank you for your work.
I asked our auditor to advertise Saturday, September 6th, approximately 10:30 a.m. for a work session, the purpose of town hall forum. And if that is the day of the courthouse, we could have it in the courthouse, or would you propose it other?
I have not been inside the courthouse. I don't know its capacity. Is there, I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
The capacity exists for sure. We have 62 seats for the public in the meeting room, and the table will be in place by then. My concern is that if we're going to do it in the same building, and we're only going to allow an hour to an hour and a half, that's going to be in the way of doing anything other than a ribbon cutting, and that's it. I mean, I'm expecting, depending on when we have representatives from our architect's firm, furniture company, contractors, you know, we're not just going to have the Chamber of Commerce and 15 people show up. This is a very special date, and so that may interrupt, especially, and I think the public is hoping for this, if we are able to offer some guided tours of the building before all of our tech, personal effects sensitive files are in the building, and it's a lot harder just to let people trounce in and out of office suites. So the timing isn't an issue as far as, you know, getting, making sure commissioners, council members are there, and then they can attend the public forum, but as far as the building goes, that's going to be a little more difficult.
Brandy, why don't you look for another location?
I will do. Do, do we have to-
And then when you get that location, you could release communicate with the three of us, county auditor, advertise.
Will do. Do we have to have a motion and a second for this to go through?
We advertise it, it'd be, we could have it, we've asked, I asked auditor to advertise.
All right, thank you. I wasn't sure.
Go with you.
Thank you for your presentation. Time with the audience from the on-world interviews.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, we've committed to it. Thank you.
I, I thank you for your willingness to support it. It's a, it's a step that sends a powerful message to our community that our leaders aren't only making decisions, but you're also making space for dialogue, and that you're willing to listen and engage, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Brandy.
Mr. Faylor with you?
I would just like to ask, please advertise it very well. It seems like you, things of this nature in this county, unless you're someone who's once, who's looking to get involved, it's not out there, not everyone just like see, you know, have it very well.
So-
Or that may someone who's never been involved in anything ever before, would be able to see.
Thank you.
May I inquire what your standard channels are, if there's anything outside of the paper that you normally do, such as the radio, and if that is just the journal, or if there are other channels that you promote through, such as the Post or WKBI or any of those things?
It'll be on our website. Go ahead.
Yes, it goes on our website. I have Nathan upload it to that. Also, I send to WKBI, the Plasguy Post, and also I've started sending to Channel 57. They reached out to me recently and asked if they would, if I would have it advertised with them. So every time we have an agenda or any type of advertising, I reach out to those, and then of course the Journal.
So if you could share with me what you send, I will, to try to meet the request, I'm also willing to design flyers that we can put at post office, libraries, other public spaces, if I can recruit volunteers to help me with the printing and the distribution of them.
Our auditor will, our auditor will advertise with the agencies, news outlets, the westerns.
Okay.
She'll do that, if you want to, for me, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Jamie Murray, Farmers Market?
Can everyone hear me like this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here on behalf of the Farmers Market. I've already spoke with Nathan about it, but I wasn't sure how to access this or the facility. Once the courthouse is opened up every Saturday from June to September, the first Saturday in June, the last Saturday in September, the Farmers Market is right outside the doors. And we are looking to have a restroom. As our market grows, we have a lot of community members that bring their family, small children. A lot of our vendors have kids that are being potty trained, so instead of running to marathon or across the street to cruisers, which can kind of pose an issue if they don't want to buy something, we'd like to be able to have availability to a restroom. So I'm asking how I go about getting that access, from Saturday mornings at 8:30 till noon, June, the first Saturday in June, to the last Saturday in September going forward. Obviously, I know things are-
Can't they just go down to the public restroom a block west?
I've actually mentioned that several times, Mike, and a lot of them that have little kids can't make it that far. Like, I, I know, I know. I've, I've mentioned it, and the response is, two blocks, I've mentioned it. So I'm asking, because it's a public facility, and it is a taxpayer facility, if we can have access just to the restroom?
Well, we've opened it up before, quite a while ago. What happened was people got in the facilities and hid and stayed in. Some homeless people stayed there all night. And we've had before flooding and get the new courthouse flooded because we opened it up to the public.
I get it.
We'd have to have a janitor there or somebody, I think, there full-time.
I don't think it would have to be someone full-time. I think there's plenty of members on our board that would offer some time, but it's a restroom, and it's a public facility that we all pay taxes to be able to use. So I don't know why it would be a problem unless the county is willing to sponsor a porta john for us to have during Farmers Market.
Think that'd be safer.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it. It's just, the Farmers Market is, we're doing okay, we're succeeding, and we're growing, but I don't know that that is in our budget to be able to pay for a porta john.
One suggestion I would have, whether you do this or not is entirely up to you, but if you do decide to do it, it would probably not be a bad idea to have a conversation with who's handling the insurance, just to make sure that, I acknowledge it is a public building, so members of the, it's foreseeable that members of the public would do it, but I, I would just maybe have a conversation with the insurance adjuster to see if that creates an issue. I doubt that it would, but it's probably worth. That's the only thing I would say about it. Whether you do it or not is up to you.
I do think, I mean, as a, as a mom who had children, who does things like that as well, a grandma that does things, it is nice to, I mean, going two blocks somewhere or having to have them cross the street, that is an entire, that's a whole nother safety issue, and you can't always leave your market, you know what I mean, unattended. So I understand that. It's the proximity, it's the proximity of having something right there that's convenient that doesn't take you away, you know, for an extended amount of time. I don't have a problem with using the courthouse bathroom, so long as, you know, somebody could be in charge of doing a walkthrough to make sure everybody's out, that the water is turned off. You know, if there is an issue down the road, then you readdress it, but at this point, I, being a public building, I don't have an issue with that.
Is it going to be under surveillance as well? Is that something I've heard in the meetings? Go on.
That's something, that's a conversation left. What, which cameras, because we did have cameras in the building previously, if they're going back in and what their coverage is. I don't know offhand what areas the cover.
Have the cameras been installed yet?
And this would be, you're wanting to do this for next year?
I'm not asking for, like, yes, I'm asking for, I mean, if it could be something that could happen this year, great, but we'd like to be able to plan for next year as well, because we really would like to incorporate more community food trucks. As you know, we've had you there.
Right.
And things like that, so people eat, people drink, they do what people do.
Mm-huh.
So at some point in time, we'd like to be able to have something that could accommodate everyone. I mean, ADA compliant as well would be, you know, like I said, a porta john. It doesn't matter to me how we do it, I just want to make sure that we're doing something conveniently located for everyone that comes to the market and anyone can access. So whatever you guys decide, I'm great with. I just would like to be able to have something to tell our vendors and the people that, you know, visit the market, hey, we can use this restroom now.
Right.
So.
I, I'd rather see the porta johns, or protect the new remodel, and I really wouldn't have a problem with county paying for them.
Um, one, one idea, I, I get the concern, Jamie, you've raised about the distance of getting down to the public restrooms. It's not as close as the courthouse would be, it's not as far as those restrooms. The Justice Center lobby might be a compromise worth looking into, only because those front doors are kept unlocked, and we have security in that lobby, so we wouldn't have to have somebody showing up, unlocking it, checking that's already monitored, there are county personnel in the building 24/7. So it's, it's not as close as the courthouse, but if we have concerns about that, it's a space where there are restrooms that are already accessible without adding burden to me or maintenance or a commissioner or something.
You.
Been a fence around too for a bit, so.
Yeah.
They weren't always able to get to that.
It's coming, it's coming down today and tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I understand the concern. I, I do think of supervision of the courthouse, liability. Jacob brought up a very good point about talking to our insurance. Those are two big items. The Farmers Market is not necessarily sponsored by the county, correct?
No, we're a 501(c)(3).
Right, and-
We established that in, I think, 2016, when we started the Farmers Market. At the time, Nathan helped us with some things, and his staff at the time, Kristen, and then from there, Justin Sherran was our attorney, created our 501(c)(3). We've just grown really tremendously, and we have a really good following, and we'd like to keep that momentum going.
Are you, is the Farmers Market also connected to the one in Francisville, or is it separate?
The Farmers Market was part of Francisville, and Francisville didn't support the Farmers Market, so we had to stop going there because we couldn't get any vendors or people to visit it on Thursday evening, I think is when we had it. And then that's when, I think it was at Parkview Haven.
Right.
Took over doing their Farmers Market like once a quarter or something like that. Yeah, I mean, we had some people visit, it just got, it just kind of fizzled out. For whatever reason, it was great, and then it fizzled out. So we kind of had, we had vendors that wouldn't come any longer. So our intention when, from the get-go, was to have it in every incorporated town in the county, but where we're at now. So we'd like to keep the following that we have, at least, you know, welcome everyone. We even do, the tribe is a big supporter of Second Saturdays, and we've amended our bylaws to allow Second Saturdays for people to, you know, bring in other items besides their home, you know, their where they may.
What I think I am hearing that is, we need to check into a few things.
I wanted to put it on the table for it to be checked in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe what you said as well, probably not going to happen this year, but we'll see what we could do for next year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie.
Other business, we have approve and sign claims and payroll.
I looked over and make a motion to approve and sign payroll.
I'll second the motion.
Motion a second to approve the claims of payroll number 16. Is there any discussion? Big none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes from July 21st, 2025, regular session with the amendment that was brought up earlier in the meeting, that Teresa will make adjustments on. We have a motion to approve those minutes with the, with the amendment slash adjustment.
Well, hold on, because I'm just reading over, Don. After that strike that we had, the next sentence says there is no actual steering committee, just an interview committee.
At this point, yes, we'll be working with the commissioners and members.
Would we be more comfortable with approving the minutes at the next meeting?
Possibly, yeah, because she may want to make that change. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have done that before.
Okay.
We have a motion to table the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion a second to table the minutes. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have any conference? Done. As we get closer to moving into the courthouse, I think we as commissioners need to discuss, think through this, but we need to discuss the East Annex, and what to do that, what to do with that building. We have the Health Department in there, and the Purdue Extension in there. The elevator's currently not working, and there's been consistent issues with the elevator. The parts to replace the elevator has been two weeks out. There is adjustments that we could be made for the public with the telephone and people coming down, but it, but it is a, definitely an issue, and I think we need to think in the future about the need for the East Annex. Also, we have, tying in with that, we have the EMA and Coroner's Office in a older facility as well, that is, is kind of ran down, or is ran down, and I think we need to possibly think of merging those into one building, and there's going to have to be a lot of discussion with that, and seeing what's feasible for us to do. But I think we're, we have two older buildings that are housing for offices that need better facilities.
I would agree. I, I would like to just put a plug in again for our EMS and their building with the money that we have left over from the courthouse project, that a lot of updates need to be made to improve that building, to make the, you know, the quality of a job there a little more admirable. So I want to keep that on the table. Is there anything we can do at this point, or do you both agree that maybe some money needs to be allocated there?
Right, we need to make a, they live there.
Right.
They need to be level.
Mm-huh. They need to be nice. I think we need to keep our facilities up, or we're going to run into worse situations.
Do we want to, do we want to, a list, or do, how do we want to proceed with that? Would we want them to come up with a wish list, or those items that need to be corrected that are most urgent for safety concerns and all that? I know they've got electrical that is strung out from one room, electric cords going from one outlet through a door into another area. Do we want?
Are you talking about EMS?
EMS, yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
I think coming up with this would be good.
Yeah. Natasha, I-
We could give to-
I get a prize. Okay. I see Natasha's out there. Can you, can you kind of work on that, Natasha, just a list of urgency, you know, prioritize list? Okay, I appreciate that. You're welcome.
And then I just had a question for Teresa in the auditor's office. The time clocks?
Yes.
Working better?
Yes, you mean the new ones?
Yes, the new ones.
Yes, they are, and we're here weeks, we'll get the remaining departments switched over to the new time clocks and the new timekeeping system. We just kind of got delayed with my payroll lady, surgery, so.
Yeah.
Yep, that is working out. Yep, that is working out a lot better.
But very good. Any other items for discussion?
No.
BS updates, Tim?
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, first I want to start off with talking about the Mammoth project and some residential concerns we've received over the last two weeks. These concerns consisted of speeding, how the school coordination is going, as well as roadway concerns. So first on the topic of speeding, as you have received as well, we've received some concerns about odorless eating who are exiting the site. We relayed these concerns to the developer to include them in their safety talks. We've also relayed this to the sheriff so he'll monitor increases controls in the.
Thank you.
Second, I want to talk about the school coordination. We understand the school starting very soon. We've been in talks with bus routes and how we safely navigate them through work zones and ensure all, everyone's safe. So we've been in coordination with them and we are continuing to talk as we approach.
Have the school corporations given you bus routes?
I have someone else assigned to it, but I believe. Steve Weaver.
What, what types of changes are you thinking for that? I mean, what would your request be?
New students coming in, change how the bus routes were first going through sites originally or.
Okay.
Us, other means.
Okay, is there any delay in the traffic from the solar developers until after the buses have gone? Or how is that being handled?
So we're talking with the developer about that as well and we're trying to find a window that would be best for all.
Okay. And when does school start? Is it tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. And one of the bus.
Next, I want to touch on the roadway maintenance. Uh, we've had a few concerns come up that Gary and us will be looking at together. He was off last week, so that has delayed some of our inspection on some of the roads that were completed. Of note, there are still more that needs to be done. Uh, by no means are we saying everything's fixed, but we do have a list of two weeks long that we need to go look at to verify its completeness, as well as continue to monitor the road's condition. Are you? Next, I want to talk about the emergency service meeting that had happened on Thursday night. And then the dry run that occurred Saturday morning. So the developer invited all of the emergency services, fire, EMS their central laydown yard for a briefing. This is the third meeting that they've had. They covered some of the topics of what would, how the dry run would function on Saturday. It occurred Saturday morning. Had both fire and EMS on scene, I believe. These had other calls that scared them as those were more pressing. That was a no lights, no siren run, so you may have seen them come through. We did have one come in with lights on, but it was, it was very positive event. Ever, they were able to find the driveway quickly and all, everything went according to plan. And it continued to follow the county for. And then we believe the setback issue in our contractors. Working with developer on those.
Setback being the ditch setbacks or roadways?
Yes, um, so several weeks ago, and I've been in communication with Attorney Shelman um, from Doral. I know that there were some discussions about right-of-ways versus where the right-of-way applies versus where it doesn't. And that's a discussion really for the drainage board as far as the jurisdiction on that 75-foot uh, easement. That being said, um, it's my understanding that Bectyl is working on revising or, or playing with the plans to see what they can do about uh, getting out or staying out of the 75-foot uh, easement. I won't speak for, for Tim Murray on what the drainage board's plans are, what his advice is. I'll let him do that as far as if there are going to be encroachments on the 75-foot easement. Um, but in speaking with Attorney Shelman, it sounded as if they were doing all they could to try to work with the engineering to avoid that 75-foot easement, if at all possible. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping to have something from him very shortly.
Tim, do you, have you received from BFNS their, the original site plans yet?
From their latest review? No, we have not received.
Do you, do you have those at all, the original site plans? Okay, and so what, what's the difference between what you have? And I, I was just asking, cause I know Carla just requested from BFNS the original site plans from BFNS. So you're saying you already have the original site plans?
Well, we were in believing what.
Okay.
There's information.
Okay.
For acting under what we had received.
Right, maybe, maybe it's not like, yeah, I know she was looking to get them to be able to blow them up larger so that she could actually see. So I didn't know if you had those or I assumed you did, so.
We have a sub.
Okay.
For acting as that's the current and so we receive updated ones with the changes that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Lastly, for the Mammoth project, I want to talk about fine email I sent two weeks ago in terms of the upper requesting that these fines be paid due to various reasons. I will bring this topic back up. Oh, from. So there was violations on how the road use steps were being followed. The developer had provided justification why they were acting in the way that they had done. I provided that in the email. So we are looking for guidance on if we issue the fines for those violations or if commissioners dismiss those for the reason of our head state.
The company would have called you. Said, hey, we have more efficient, safer, whatever the. Change.
Correct, be able to, would only be able to do that with Gary's approval. At the time of those violations, we were not. Put together the fines.
And they've not paid those fines yet, is what you're saying?
These have not been issued.
They haven't been issued.
So what we normally do is we track the fines, we put, put it together and we discuss them. And then we have some back and forth on that and then we will, once all parties are in a mutual understanding.
Okay.
And so we are at a point where we, we're at an impasse with them. Sending it to you, official county status.
Okay, thank you. And have you two looked over that enough to be able to answer tonight?
I think communication is important. Communication place from the developer, they wished it.
I would agree, so you're saying, Don, issue the fines at this point?
Yes, I think we would have communicated, I think BS could have talked to Gary, things could have been worked out.
And I would agree, Tim, so Mike, anything?
Uh, that is all I have on Mammoth. I do want to touch on the other three when time per, if time permits. Are there any additional questions on the Mammoth project?
No.
Yeah. May Apple, we did have a progress meeting with them. We are getting, preparing to get ready to receive some of their plan sets. So they are still planning on a spring timeline with true appearing commencing this November. Things are progressing a little quicker. We are in talks with both Mammoth and them as they share the road that they plan to utilize. It's a discussion that we continue to monitor and include both parties. So more to come on that. Moss Creek, hasn't said that name in a while, but we have an official progress meeting coming up with them to get significant updates. That's scheduled for later next week. So I will be able to provide more at the next commissioner meeting. And there is no further updates on that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Jacob.
Yes, um, today I had an opportunity to have a Zoom call with uh, their attorney. Um, Mr. Cunibale was, was also present and Natasha. We had an opportunity to essentially discuss the concerns as far as the fact that the county was not a party to the contract, which is concerning. Um, also the concern about confidentiality, um, as far as numbers are concerned for the county to prevent other or third parties from undercutting county, the county as far as bids or other services go. Um, and Attorney Shram essentially indicated that he was going to go back to his client with our concerns and would be following up with me in the next week. Um, I, based on his comments, I, I got the feeling that he didn't think anything that the county was requesting was unreasonable. So I, I have a feeling that they will likely agree to all of the changes we have suggested.
Yes, they're paying for this study or EMS.
Yes, and I, and I admittedly, I don't know if the contract um, that was provided had ever been in front of Attorney Shram before. So I, I know he needed some time to familiarize himself with it. Um, but he, he seemed very optimistic and open to our suggestion.
Thank you for the update.
Hmm.
At this time, we'll accept public comments. I ask that you come to the mic, state your name, residence. I ask that you speak once and we please ask you to limit your comments to approximately two minutes. Mr. Gutwine?
Um, I didn't come here to, to complain a lot, but I do want to share some thoughts. Um, commissioners, federal taxpayers and citizens. Uh, Brandy, your, your thought of the town hall. Um, to bed, that one about four or five years ago. It reminded me of a, a quote. Reasonable people, equally informed, seldom disagree. And I think if that had happened, there would be a lot less friction in this county. There's friction among families, there's friction in churches, there's friction just everywhere. And it's not fun. And, and the way I see this is maybe, maybe a good way to, to, to say it is. I'm, I'm sure you all have heard the phrase, the path of least resistance. And a couple of illustrations, water on a mountain flows down to the valleys, not over the higher terrain. In a football game, the offensive strategy is to move the ball through the weakest area of defense to get to where they want to go. And as I have seen this going on now for the last number of years, it seems like the solar companies have found that Plaski County is the path of least resistance. And have been able to move the ball wherever they want. You know, I guess if, if the, if the tax revenue comes in, that's one thing. But if you're going to reduce permit costs and you're going to reduce, uh, and you're going to give tax abatements, the rest of us can, can subsidize, I guess, the county's got to spend so much money to run this county. And just for reference, in, in Plaski County, we're paying, we're paying $31.23 an acre for taxes on farmland. In Jasper County is 1422, pretty much the same type of land. So, so it makes me wonder, you know, what's the difference in these counties? Why, why are we paying so much here and, and not, not as much there? I'm sure they, they do have a bigger tax base, but is that a reason to give tax abatements? You know, and maybe you got a good, a good answer, I don't know. Um, cause I personally, I don't want to subsidize the uh, big companies coming in and, and um, you know, we pay, pay their way. So, you know, I just, I just uh, would like to see our county run like a business should be run. And what that takes, you know, I think sometimes it takes some tough decisions. Um, maybe it's, maybe it's not spending somewhere, or maybe it's taxing the people, other people. But you know, it comes to the point, you know, how, how much can you tax the uh, you know, just the, the normal citizen? You know, it, it makes it, it makes it tough. But something else though is tough, you can't pick up out of this county and move to another county. You physically can't do it as much as you might like to. So all I, all I can say is, you know, if, if we're all informed, reasonable people, equally informed, seldom disagree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Baylor, you can be next. Bill, I've talked to our attorney about the issue that you called me. Thank you.
I just want to thank you all. After. That. Eight of. How embarrassing to be in. Last time I was here, uh, trustee board was going to have a meeting to discuss the current situation of the station. I, I don't think that.
I, I was told, Mr. Baylor, I know it's comment, but I was told uh, that there was a meeting that did take. So yeah, so whatever that's worth, but we got, you got the ball rolling.
Right.
With curpsy and that is extremely important.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Dale Pelcy, Francisville, lifelong resident. And I say amen to everything art said. And I came here tonight and it's so ironic that Brandy is a town hall. That was what I was going to suggest. I have emailed all three of you commissioners. And thanks Jenny for responding. Don, you responded a couple of times. Mr. McClure, you have a. times. Mr. McClure, you have not responded once. And I think transparency is what we need in this county. And I realize you guys are in a position where you cannot please everyone, that some people are going to be happy with your decision, other people are not. I'm not saying I'm right in where I stand, and I totally respect another person's thought. But I really feel like this county is being torn apart. And I just really feel like we need transparency. And I guess I want to ask all three of you commissioners tonight, if we have town halls, and you see a show of hands where the majority feels a certain way, will you guys vote the way the majority feels? That's a question I want to ask all three of you.
Are you looking for an answer tonight?
I think so.
An answer tonight? I will, I will vote the way my constituents from my district want me to vote, as well as the county. I know the whole county elected each of us. But, yeah. And I, and I would want it to be more than a town hall, but I think there are many opportunities for this community to be able to voice how they feel. And I'm going to go back to the election in 2020. If there had been transparency with all of the things that were about to take place, I think that this should have been, there should have been a referendum on the ballot. How do, how does every person in Plaski County feel about this? For this to fall in the hands of a few elected officials and some unelected bureaucrats is absolutely wrong. The people of Plaski County did not have the opportunity to voice their opinion when it came to this. And, and again, this is a massive, these projects are massive, and they, they are changing the face of Plaski County. They are changing our communities. They are changing relationships. They are changing quality of life for hundreds, hundreds of families. And these decisions came down to, they were behind the door, behind closed doors. I will stake my life on that. They were by very few individuals. And the residents of Plaski County had no say whatsoever. And I disagree that that is how it should have worked. So I'm all for a referendum on a ballot. Something this size never should have taken place the way it did, Dale. Never.
Totally agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With your comments.
I've had more people wanting the solar panels and not want. I get phone calls regularly to let them go. It's our property. It's our right to do what we want with them. And I get none negative. I get, well, not none, but very few. But I get a lot of positive wanting it, saying the county needs it. Jasper County, the reason their taxes are lower because they had a big powerhouse that paid millions in taxes. So utilities, like the state representative said when he was here, utility communities make money. So I would, I'd go with what the majority wanted and what the lawyers.
Thank you. And I understand, I understand you're on the different, different side of the county, but.
Yeah.
We are.
Exactly.
And, you know, over here, maybe it's different, but we're very concerned. My son and I are fourth and fifth generation farmers, and we want to continue to. We love this county. And we feel like it's really going to pot. Don, what's your thought?
There's a lot to consider with that question, right? You might be in a town hall meeting with 20 people there. They might oppose subject A. People hear about it. I might get several phone calls and other people. We sit differently. As an elected official, you have to do what is best for the county. Now, for myself, solar teeps seems to be the big topic. I have no land in solar. I have no family that owns solar, land to put in solar or out of solar. So my decision, what is based on what is best for the county, it may be a or n. I'm walking. Jenny's walking into a, we're walking into a situation where the land has been laid. But you learn from that. You have to make adjustments to it as it goes on. It's not easy, or anyone would do it, right? So you have, I have to decide on what's best for the county.
Well, like I said, you can't please everyone. I know that. Just it seems like a lot of this stuff is, the rules just haven't totally been followed. There's a lot of upset people. I've got a couple businesses, Francis. We get around. People are not happy. The whole county, they just feel like there's been a lot of frauders. I'm seeing things. I just want to bring it to attention that I think change needs to happen. I think a town hall meeting would. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else? Entertainment to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second to adjourn. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.